It's Monday, February 12th, and it's 6:00 PM. And I'll call the special meeting of the Groton Board of Education meeting to order.
Okay, and I'm calling the February 12th Groton Town Council Special Meeting Agenda to Order. And I would also like to notate that Counselor Gajewski will not be participating in tonight's meeting or any other future discussions with or about the Board of Education budget. He will be recusing himself to do a personal con-- due to personal conflict of interest he has with the Board of Education budget. He will discuss this further during a counselor communication at the next town council meeting. Also, the three chairs had discussed and agreed to five-minute speaking intervals and one time per person. And Counselor Rusk has agreed to be the timer. Thank you.
I am Mike Whitney. I'm RTM member and chair of the Education Committee, and I'm calling the Education Committee meeting to order.
So the first order of business is Superintendent Austin will present her proposed budget.
Right. Before we start, I just have a clarifying question. Just make sure I heard you said one turn of five minutes per member?
Yes, that's what the chair agreed to.
Thank you.
So this is the superintendent's proposed level service budget. There are enormous increases that we really want to talk to you about and show you what are the drivers of this budget, both for what we've experienced this year in this year's budget and also for next year. The Board of Ed has gone through chapter by chapter and through all and through the function codes. And really, our job now is, all the directors are knowing, to go through and look for efficiencies, our principals as well. We will be giving proposals to-- for cuts that we can see within the budget, but this is really for the same services that we've had in the past. So there's really not many additions. There might be a few tutors that were added into the budget during ARPESR that will continue with us. The staffing, as far as certified staff, is kind of a wash. There were seven additions, but six and a half taken out. So, you know, we will be reviewing that with the board, and then we have this month to work with the board to really scrutinize the budget, and then they will be bringing it back to you. So this is just out-of-the-gate level service from one year to the next. So I wanted to start. Dave Flag is our Finance Director. He has joined us this fall and comes to us from Hartford Public Schools, so he's used to very big budgets and lots of grants. And he's really been such a great addition to this team. And I'm going to let him start with the financial challenges. So I know we have someone, Sean, I think Sean's helping us out in the back. And we're going to go to the next slide. And of course, these are all of our board members. And, you know, we welcome to board new board members this year, too.
Great. So this is the first slide in your deck. Small print up there, but so this is an internal document we've been using just to track our challenges for this year. And I thought I'd give you the highlights, top to bottom, on just what's been going on at the Board of Ed. So if you start up top, I wanted to outline just ARPESR. So this is sort of our last large COVID-related federal funding that we have that'll be rolling off the end of this fiscal year. So we feel good about that. We have it balanced. It needs to be fully obligated by the end of September, but we're going to shoot for the end of June to try to get that behind us. If you recall, this is about a six, $6.2 million grant that started a few years back. So we'll be able to close that out. The second piece was legal fees. So this was on early, almost when I first arrived. This was running a little bit hot with just some of the activity that we have. But right now, we feel pretty good about it. There's about $12,500 left in the budget, or about 18% remaining. So we feel good that we're going to be on target for that one this year. The third one down is just health insurance in general. We've been sharing some updates as we've gone along here, but we've had some challenging months out of the gate with our health insurance claims. They're running about 25% over last year. And if you look at it, not to get too much into details, but it's not your primary, your typical primary care visits. It's these mid-tier claims, you know, between 50 and a couple hundred thousand have really been the challenge for us. So this actually is a, we share a document, a dashboard, per se, every month with the board, but this is one that we're keeping our eye on. This is a big number for us. And we'll talk about that a little bit, too, as we get into fiscal year '25. The fourth one are just what we call property costs. It's really property costs in any unplanned activities. There's a schedule we're going to go into on the next slide. But we've had some challenges with some water issues at some of the schools. We've had a generator issue. Just recently, we had a truck issue. So there's a whole host of these things that we'll touch base on the next slide. But, you know, all of these were unplanned, and right now, we're estimating around $390,000 for this fiscal year for these activities. Midway down is transportation. And just, you know, a little mix in just our normal bus load. But the real challenge thus far has been in the transportation around athletics and field trips. So what's changed in our new contract is, for an athletic event, for instance, we now get charged for an hourly rate, the hourly rate for the bus driver, plus a mileage rate. So if you think about going to, you know, a place, Walcott or someplace that might be a little bit out of the way, we could see a football game costing us $1,000 for a bus trip, easily. So that's sort of new for us. And then we have our lunch program. I think this has been a challenge in the past, but this year, it seems like it's much more than what we've seen historically. So what we call, these are just sort of unpaid lunch balances, primarily at these three locations that you see. We've already exceeded $30,000 year-to-date. We're anticipating that to be close to 80 by the time the year ends. Closer to the bottom is utilities. And this is really all three, right? This is natural gas, oil, and electric. But right now, we are on pace to either hit or exceed our utility number from last year. The challenge with that was the budget was a little bit lower than what we anticipated. So we're expecting to have some challenges this year financially with just achieving the electric bills and oil bills. Second to the bottom are just, you know, I'm not going to say typical, but contractual and wage inflation. Not really much more here, other than it's just, you know, it's probably 70% of our budget, so it's an item we need to keep an eye on.
And minimum wage increases as of January.
Yep. And then the last are just some prior-year expenses. So we did have some expenses from last year that bled into this fiscal year that were not planned. So when we closed the books last year, there was a little over $600,000 that was deferred into this year. And then as this year has gone along, we've incurred another $130,000 of invoices from last year that were not accrued.
But we have a plan of monitoring that.
Oh, absolutely.
For the invoices.
So the next slide, this is some detail around the, sort of the one I noted around property costs. So this is just each one of the events that we've incurred thus far this year. I'm not going to get into details in each one, but you can see the first four around Mystic River. And there's two water claims in there. There's a transformer replacement, some fencing. We had some issues up at Fitch, four events there as well. We had the generator at GMS. Then, as I mentioned, just recently, we had a maintenance truck and a plow that got damaged. And then probably most recently is the cyber attack, week and a half or so ago. So all the way down to the maintenance truck and plow, all those are invoiced numbers that we've either paid or have really good information on. The latest two are just estimates. The maintenance plow and truck, we got some help from our insurance company. The cyber attack, that's our deductible, and we've already incurred $39,000 of that.
Does anyone have any questions about some of the things that we're up against with the current budget?
Point of informa-- we only get to speak once of five minutes, so I guess that wouldn't really work. I'd love to answer, but we kind of have to spit it all out at once, it seems.
That's fine.
Okay.
So this is our arrow chart, up and down, and the influences of the FY '24 budget on to '25. And so I'll have Dave go through everything from wages, transportation, insurance, utilities, and our DOD supplemental as well.
Sure. Sean, I'm just going to start left to right. And if you look over to the left, it's going to narrow up for wages, you know, roughly above $4.2 million. And there's some commentary in the bottom there, but the punchline really is that's sort of evenly split between contractual obligations and then FTEs that are rolling in from ARPESR as that expires this year. The second one I just talked briefly about was just transportation. But not only do we have some challenges with the athletics and field trips, we're also in our, we'll be in our second year of the contract, which will have a 12 and a half percent increase just on our regular buses. The third in the middle is the insurance. It's got about a $5 million number. We're going to, we'll get into this a little bit deeper, but the challenge here is, we're not anticipating having any reserve above the corridor as we exit this year. So there won't be any reserve to sort of help offset some of the costs as we go into fiscal year '25. On top of that, just given some of the statistics I showed you on the first page, with our claims being so high, we have rate increases on top of that going into next year.
And I think you all realize that over the past several years, I've been here since 2014, and we've been able to really bring you budgets of 0%, 1%, I think 2.2% was one of them. And we just have seen that while we consider that level budget, it really did dig into other areas. And then with the inflation on top of it, it's really made for what we're seeing in this current budget. And also, we've used our health reserve to help pay for it. So we've utilized that in really healthy times. So now, when it's more challenging, we don't have it to use. So I just wanted to put that out there.
So a little bit more than halfway over, you'll see utilities. And the last two are really smaller, but I wanted to keep an eye on them. We have about $200,000, anticipating about a $200,000 increase next year across all three of our utilities. That does include some benefit of the solar panels at the two schools. So that could have been a little bit of a higher number.
Groton Middle and Mystic River.
Yep. And then we have the DOD supplemental, so we're being a little conservative here. You know, normally, we've used the supplemental to pay for some of our IT or technology costs. Right now, we don't have the numbers to be eligible for the supplemental this year. So as we keep working that day in and day out, hopefully, we get there. But for this first round of the budget, we wanted to be a little bit conservative and make sure we had those numbers accounted for. And then the last one off to the right, I just put it in blue. It's a question mark here, but there's some legislation going on around magnet tuition, inter-district magic tuition, and voag tuition, and how that's going to be handled, really, the interchange between each district and the state and the districts. And it's been, honestly, it's been from zero to 100. So right now, I think the governor's going to go through his education proposals on Thursday. Hopefully, we'll get some new news on that.
So as we dig in and look at healthcare costs, we want to orient you to kind of our history from FY 2015 to current. Blue line showing the Board of Ed cost and then Anthem's expected cost. And we've always been below, which has been a really good place to be. But as you see, between 2022, we kind of met together. We dipped a little bit 2023, but this year, with the challenges and, you know, as Dave had explained, the types of challenges in healthcare, it's really caused it to go above for the first time in a long time, so. And then that other little chart, I don't know if you wanted to say more about that, but that just gives you the numbers. And looking at the experience from 91% to 100%, trying to orient us to what we're going to be deciding in this budget, right?
Yeah. You know, the box is really just for goalposts, just as we're starting to think about where do we land in terms of our healthcare costs. I wanted to at least give some understanding of where we've been. So if you look at the first line, just as an example, you know, over a nine-year average, we've averaged a little over a million, million one per year below what our healthcare company has told us our costs were going to be. But just the last two years alone, we've been just a little bit over, about $100,000 over. So I'm kind of using those as sort of the goalposts as we think about this. And what's been interesting about this year, and I don't get off healthcare, but in challenging in terms of predictability is, you know, we've had months of healthcare costs of $800,000, and we've had months of $1,300,000.
Just this past year.
So we're not, you know, that's just in the first six months. So we're not even in a range here that's, you know, allowing us to be too predictable on that.
And then we always are monitoring revenue to support education, and we'll be showing you a little more about that experience on the next slide. But typically, we've been seeing an overage or excess revenue coming in to the town through different education components, whether it's ECS or whether it's Impact Aid. The special ed excess cost is really something that I understand is a reimbursement cost and should come to the town. What I hear from other superintendents and from legislators, that's what should happen with it. So just looking at those, we really are monitoring that carefully. We're usually pretty modest in estimating that, but we know that we've had good history in those things coming in over what we expected. So the overage then goes to the town. And there's a lot of numbers on that page. That's why I felt like you needed it in front of you. So we have the actual at the top. We have what the budget was below, and then what the differential is when we go back to 2018. I don't know if you remember that year. I remember it vividly when Dr. Grenier was here, and there was really the question about ECS coming in at full amount, which has been about $24,000, $25,000 million. So the estimate for that that year was $19.9 million. And fortunately, that year, it came in at $24.9. So that was kind of an anomaly, but I do remember that year. And, you know, there's many other grants that are received and income revenue sources that come through adult ed, special education excess cost, magnet school transportation, which we fill out, and it helps get our children over the bridge to New London and down the street to the, you know, Marine Science School and to Legerd. So non-public service, pupil service, Medicaid, and our teachers actually are responsible for filling out that paperwork, who are working in special education. Pupil Impact Aid, which has been really steady and healthy and seems to have grown. We are a military district. We're the largest military student population in our state and probably in our area and region, too. So, and then there's tuitions from other towns, and there are a few, but we have about four students who chose to do the International Baccalaureate Program at Fitch, and they pay per pupil cost to come, and then that money goes to the town. So it's a handful. We've actually entertained, like Old Line, East Line, or Old Lime has done, to really market that a little better, because we are one of two international baccalaureate global districts. So that could be something that would help also with revenue, and it would help grow our program as well. We would have room. Was there anything you wanted to say about that, other than that? And I know that John Burt and I have been in discussion, and he runs some numbers that were really pretty close to these numbers. So to see what the excess revenue collected over time would be. And it's been approximately $10 million, I believe, for the time, $10 and a half million that has been earned by the town on behalf of education and excess revenue from education.
If we can flip. So this was just going to give you, I'm just going to draw a line here. If you think about the top, so the top is just sort of a superintendent-proposed budget without healthcare. At one point, when we started the process, we didn't have our healthcare renewal numbers. We weren't quite sure what that was going to look like. So we did sort of an apples-to-apples, which showed about an 8% increase. The bottom is a budget with healthcare. If you think about my goalpost again, sort of the lower end of the healthcare funding, it's about 91% of the funding, which is really what we've been averaging over the last nine years or so. And that's about 13, 13 and a half percent. The numbers that you see in terms of increase and decrease match up pretty closely with what I had shown earlier on the arrow chart, the yellow arrow chart. So the next three are just an update. I think you've probably seen this every year, but just an update on our expenditure per pupil that's provided by the state. The '22, '23 numbers are in now. You can see a little bit of our trend. You know, it's kind of interesting, I guess, if you're just looking at us as a standalone, but I think it's probably what's more relevant if we, if we can get to the next page or two. It gives you a little bit of comparisons of some local towns, as well as, you know, towns in our similar group. So the next one is just local districts. You know, starting on the left all the way from Old Saybrook, you know, you go a little bit towards the middle, and you'll see that the Connecticut average, about $19,700. We're a little bit below down there. You see Groton, $17,910, and then Legerd's on the bottom, about $16,871. And then when you compare us to what's considered our DRG, our reference group, again, off to the left, Bloomfield, that's sort of the high watermark, right next to Middletown. The average here is $19,439, and we're just slightly above Nogatuck at $17,917. So this is the most recent information. They're always about a year behind.
So one of the things that we're working on is a utilization report for software. And also, we've surveyed our teachers and staff regarding, you know, software that they feel is really necessary in instruction, software that they find is most effective in instruction. And so between the survey results and working with the principals and then looking at what's being used, we are able to find efficiencies. So we are looking at that very closely with the concern of not receiving supplemental, which has been coming in, supplemental DOD has been coming in at about half a million dollars a year. And at one point, it was really very healthy. I think the town council and RTM remembers that and had even advised us to be able to use that at times when times were really a struggle. And so we have really kept to the mission of using it for technology, and we do have enough to cover us for some of the leasing that we've done. But there, you do see in this budget an uptick for student computers and also for software in that budget. Oh, I do have the highlights. You've seen these each year. These, when I talk about a level service budget, you know, we're very proud of a lot of the things that are accomplished. We do, like I said, we have this International Baccalaureate Global District. We have seen an uptick, many more students taking some of the advanced placement classes. We're even marrying the ECE and UConn credit with AP and IB. So children not only have an opportunity to get a certificate, but they can also get credit. And there's a lot of legislation out there. I mean, reams and reams. Our board has really been studying that. Our legislators have come to us and talked to us across the state. And, you know, one of them is the right to read. And we did get about $190,000 on right to read, and we're using it to buy decodable text and things that really have been suggested and, you know, but there are many, the age changes for both kindergarten and for special education for 22-year-olds. They need to stay in school the whole year when they turn 22. So those all come with cost. You know, that costs the district's money. And we're just, you know, trying to comply the best we can and do it the most effective way. So you'll see in those highlights some of that legislation, some of the things that you've already heard about in our programs and in our schools. I know the board always is very careful about the numbers of students. They have a maximum number of students, which is about 20 to 24 in each classroom, and we do monitor that. We are a highly mobile district. We have 750 students who usually come into us and about 600 less than. We always keep a few less than that leaving. So a net difference of, you know, about a quarter to a third of our population is turning over, which, you know, our teachers and our staff have gotten really used to getting to know kids really fast and giving them just what they need and, you know, moving them along. But it does, you know, it does affect our community and our numbers at different times in the year. We actually lost a submarine before the October 1 numbers. They, you know, were, you know, moved to a different location. And then we have another one coming in, but not until after the October 1 numbers. And since October 1 is when we're looking at enrollment, sometimes you're not really getting an accurate picture from those numbers, the numbers that we're seeing all through the year. So I don't know if they're, yeah. And of course, the partnerships. As you know, we had our seventh DODA grant, which is worth about $1,001.25. And it really is supporting a lot of professional learning, even conferences, travel, those things we've tried to take out of the budget as much as we can. And then, you know, our partnerships with NESTS and Project O and Mystic Arts to enhance our intra-district magnets and also our middle school and high school. So a lot of that work. And we have enterprise funds with Treehouse, so we can provide childcare. And it's got a scale amount so that families, it should be accessible and affordable to everyone who wants to take part. And of course, our food service program is also an enterprise fund, self-sustaining. So I think that wraps it up for challengers and drivers, challenges and drivers. Any counselors have any comments? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent. And can I, is it Dave?
Yeah, Dave.
Dave, okay. So what I wanted to just talk about a little bit was just sort of relating these numbers to the average household and the average, and our resident, average resident here in Groton. And if I look at your number on this page, which is an increase of almost $11 million, the 13.45, and relate that to how much it adds to the contribution the town gives to the school department. So the town gives $50 million, $50,600,000 was last year's. So adding $11 million to that, we have basically $61 million. It's over a 20% increase that you're asking on the town contribution. So that's significant and alarming a little bit. But I also took those numbers and wanted to relate that to how it affects our taxes, and that comes out to about a 2.5 mil rate, increase in our mil rate. And I took, looked up the average assessed value in Groton, so $258,000 is the average assessed home value. And then took my taxes, so I went and got my taxes. And so for me, who I fit right into that middle level, it's about a $670 increase per household, or about $54 a month increase. So I just, I just want you to be aware of the budget and what it's going to do to the average resident and the average homeowner's tax bill in the town, and just encourage you to really look at these carefully, because the town side's going to have costs also. But the education-- But the education one, is this going to be a significant one, and, and how we navigate that is going to be a challenge. So that's basically my point, is just for you to be aware of what-
We are sharpening our pencils.
Sharpening your pencils, that's what I'm encouraging you to do.
And we are, we are looking for every efficiency we can find, yeah.
And if we wanted to sort of, people want to figure it out, it's basically for every hundred thousand dollars of home value, it's about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So two-hundred thousand dollars is five-hundred, three-hundred, seven-hundred and fifty, and four-hundreds is a thousand.
Got it, thank you.
So just, I want you to keep those numbers kind of in your head.
I appreciate that. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent Austin, I have a few questions. So I remember a discussion about ARPA and using it for employees a while ago when first brought up. I believe we said that if this money runs out, we weren't going to unless people were retiring and they would move into that time, to that slot. Is that correct?
One of the things our BESR was really ma-, meant for was to close that gap. And we did have staff, and really, the teacher staff is awash, so we aren't really having more teachers in it. But we did have tutors, and we had SEL tutors, and we had a couple of social workers, and really, we're seeing that students still are in need. We were hopeful that we would be able to transition away from a lot of those tutors, but we're really finding that there's still a need in our schools. So we have trimmed back on some of them, but there are some that we want to see continue. We actually have received a high dosage tutoring grant in mathematics. So we were able for the next year and a half to be able to support some of the mathematics tutors in the district. And then the social work, to have a social worker in every school, and I know that two of the smaller schools have a half-time social worker in each, but those were really critical positions that we felt needed to continue. So that was the hope, that, that this thing called COVID that interrupted all of our lives and our students' lives and their education would be fixed by now. But it's still a long haul, and, you know, I'm very sensitive to the fact that, you know, we need to really do all of our very best to make sure that, you know, gaps are closed and that kids are really realizing their education. So it was, it was the hope and the goal, but there are still several tutors in that ARPSR that we put in to continue.
How many is that?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
I believe, I know we had discussion, my concern-
We did, we did, we were hopeful, and, yeah.
You were hopeful, but my concern is, is it's going to hit us hard.
Yeah.
And that's not what we anticipated, not what we all discussed at the time when we were doing the budget for these last several years during COVID. So either we figure something out, and I noticed that there's a hiring, because I see the, I've been paying attention, but also our numbers aren't looking good for it. Because in checking what the states put out and where we're at is very concerning. So are they being really helped with the tutors around? Because our numbers don't look like they're going any higher. So that's a couple of my concerns. The other thing is I talked to another municipality outside of Groton, and they noticed that all the schools did that and did it for employees, where I didn't believe it had to be just employees. It could have been put towards something else, correct?
Well, there were some supplies in there, technologies. We've used it for a number of things, HVAC systems. We actually use some of the ARPSR for HVAC, so there were other things-
That's my next question.
Yes, so there were, there were some other things that we used. It was, there were several renditions, and we actually had a team that created it and had a CAPS superintendent, retired superintendent mentor that helped us with the plan. And we really pretty much stuck to the plan that we initiated in the beginning. And like I said, that social worker, the SEL tutors, we really needed them, the kids needed them, the families needed them. And I wouldn't have changed that, you know, hiring of those extra people to help support our schools and our families.
My next question, if I still have time, the HVAC systems. I remember we all had a discussion at the liaison meeting about the grant that came out. We talked about this in July. Are we going to try to apply this year in December?
We are. We had applied originally for the first grant, the second grant, and you know, it has, it comes with, you need to be able to have a CIP for HVAC, or you need to have the town do portion of the HVAC. You just, it's a reimbursement grant, so you have to put out for the number. They supply like half. I think we're at a fifty-eight percent where they would supply, and then the town would have to come in. So in order to put the grant in, I'll be coming to you to let you know what that looks like, and through the CIP, we've actually accounted for that work. But we need HVAC systems in Charles Barnham to upgrade at Fitch High School, and actually in our newer schools, Catherine Kolnowski in Northeast Academy, you know, they also are in need because they're only fifteen-year-old buildings, but we've been told that those need to be replaced now too, the HVAC systems on top of those buildings. So.
Okay, I, I'm done.
But the answer is yes, we are applying. Does the RTM like to take a turn?
You have a few questions. My first one is field trips, because I see the rising bus cost for every travel. I'm concerned that students aren't getting the opportunity to physically go somewhere else. It's very valuable. Is that going to be the case next year, that they can actually go on field trips?
Well, they've actually been going on field trips. One of the things with our partnerships, they do it two ways, that there are trips that kids take out and go on the boats and go into the fields, and then there are times when they come to us and they're able to do in-house field trips. And those experiences have been marvelous. The bus company did award us with fifteen free trips, and so each school has about three, I think, or, yeah. And maybe it was twenty-one. I, I got three trips, and those are for the largest number of trips with the most amount of kids. So those are being utilized throughout the year. And then the others, we have to pay for. I know that Mark Romano has worked closely with the town, and the town has some small vans and buses, so with some of our smaller sports teams and some of our smaller classes that might be working at Avery Point or Project O, we've been able to utilize those at a lesser cost, so we really appreciate that collaboration. So I'm going to try to do the very same thing with those extra trips for next year as well.
That's, that's good, because I think it's important for every student, every year, to get, get out somewhere besides their school.
Right.
And I do value the, I know the value of bringing them to the schools too. My next question is about coaches and clubs. In looking at other towns and just looking around at our teams and clubs, it seems to me that the stipends should be increased, and the number of assistant coaches or, or people involved in staffing clubs should be increased, and that there should be some kind of uniformity to consider time spent on the club, travel days, things like this, because even in my own work, we're surprised to find sometimes that stipends that we once thought were generous have lagged behind and are actually, if you divide by the hours spent, aren't up to minimum wage. And so it's a hidden underpayment of, of people that really won't raise the budget much, but it, what it will do is raise coaching quality, morale, and that, those extension enrichment experiences that are, are very valuable to students for their own right, but reflect back on their engagement in school and sense of place, and then their education as well.
So can I add to that? Those are all negotiated with the Groton Education Association and the Board of Ed. So all stipends are within a, you know, a negotiating contract. So those contracts are about four-year contracts, and I know when we did the latest one with coaches, we looked at a lot of data of districts all around, all across the state, and we looked at number of students participating. So there was a lot of work that was done, and the GEA brought us what they thought was fair, and the board worked with them to make sure that we had the right numbers. We also have put in for additional grants, the Twenty-First Century Grant for both the middle school and the high school, which has afforded us this after-school enrichment in the middle school and the high school, which has really been worth its weight in gold. And those stipends come with the grants, so people who sign up know what the enrichment rate is in our district. And, and even with the grants, we, we use our enrichment rate, and they sign up to do that on their own. So it's, it's not an obligation, it's something that they choose to do, and that's been very successful. But we do look for every grant opportunity to help support what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I do understand they choose to do it, but I think they should be paid better for it. My next question is about a school-based health clinic. I wasn't sure if that's even in the traditional schools budget, but my question is, I've heard that there are long wait lists, at least at the high school and middle school, and that there's, and that's probably happening in other districts as well, but adding staff members to the school-based health clinics, there would be very much needed.
So those, those are also grant-funded, and families have to sign up to receive those services, and we do encourage our families to sign up, but there is a waiting list for both mental hea-, health and physical health. It actually supports even our military schools. Charles Barnum doesn't have a lo-, doesn't have a location on-site for the physical health, they have someone for social work. But our students at Charles Barnum can go to Thames River or go to another school to receive services. And even the Navy base and the pediatrics are limited, so they often have a hard time getting kids' physicals and shots, so we're able to provide that through school-based health. But the parent must sign up for it, it's not anything that we can do. So school nurses are also available in our schools, and our own social workers are. So that's the part that I take care of, and that, the VNA had always been something that the town, and we're looking at Hartford Healthcare since Yale is no longer able to do the VNA.
Actually, that crosses over to my next question, but just on the school-based health clinics, those long wait lists, I think that's a, a real access to care issue, so it's not a, a signup issue for pe-, for students or parents. And that access to care, whether it's mental or physical, I think not being able to get that is just as bad as not being able to get a school lunch, if not worse.
Right. Well, it, it is a separate program that is housed in our schools, and it is grant-funded, and we do our very best to make sure kids do have access from our end.
Okay. And then about the school nurses, I think that's not in the school budget, but in the, the town budget, as I'm familiar, I was just wondering if anyone had a comment on what's going to happen with that next year?
So I've, I've reached out to Hartford Healthcare, and they're working with us. They know what the contract is, they know what our affordability is, and they're getting back to us on that, but there's a good chance that they'll be able to take that on.
Okay, thank you. And my last one is just any CIPs that we should expect. I also know that that's not part of the education budget, but this is a broader discussion, I was wondering about those.
I don't know, Sam, are you back there?
Yes.
I do know that HVAC is in there. We're looking at Northeast Academy and CK in particular, and that we also put in there things that we brought to your attention. We know that they're in the million-dollar range, so it's not really CIP, but we've talked to you about the fields and the, the buildings at Fitch. We've talked to you a little bit about the vintage wing, really the need for culinary arts to be upgraded. Thank you. I'm doing it off the top of my head. I should, I should know this after ten years, right? So those, the culinary arts is one that I really would love to see happen. We had SLAM do a study for us, and they kind of came up with it through the Perkins Grant. We've been able to buy new stoves, we've bought new sinks, but just to reconfigure it so that we have more access, we've actually made the Foods One course, a semester course, so more kids can get in. It's one of the most popular courses we have. Some people say, well, they can just go to Grasso Tech, but we are a comprehensive high school, and all of our Fitch kids couldn't fit into Grasso for their culinary arts. I mean, it is, it is a pretty state-of-the-art facility in culinary, but we're just looking to upgrade it to make it more efficient and to get more access for our kids. But, and then, you know, the auditorium project is a project, I don't know if you've been there lately, we actually let them borrow some of our microphones, and we've worked on the lighting, but it really needs an upgrade with sound system, with lighting. Some of the chairs don't really work, you can kind of, you know, when you look at the facility, I mean, that really, when you, I would love for you to come and do a walkthrough with me in the vintage wing and see some of the areas that we, you know, we'd love to see improved at some point. But, you know, we're, you know, we've put down the things that we think are more feasible in the HVAC systems, if we can get that grant, you know, to do partial, part of it. And then the culinary arts, and then the auditorium project are more in the scope of a CIP, but we put those other things in just to remember, we still have fields, we still have bleachers, we still have those buildings that need care. So, thank you. Any more of your RTM members like to speak? Councillor Merritt?
Yes, I, I have a question. I'd like to go back to, excuse me, Charles Barnum for a minute, on the roof. When is that going to become, when is that going to be repaired?
So I believe the plan is this summer. Sam, the roof?
We're working with the architect presently, and the plan is to get that in, in time for the project this summer.
This summer. So the architect has been working on it to see the scope of the work. We've actually also looked into solar panels that would come along with that to see if that could be done at the same time. So this summer is the goal.
The money's already there.
Yep, you're right.
Right, and I just think that, I hope there's not any damage that occurred in the past two, three years since the roof money was allocated.
No, I think that our team has definitely taken care of it in the meantime, but it does need to happen. You are right, it does need to happen.
And the money has already been put there.
That's right.
And on the culin-, culinary issue, I know that the students would like to stay in the school that they are in with their friends and the academics instead of swapping over with Grasso Tech. And I think it's a good idea that they stay in the school that they're registered in. And to upgrade it, I think that would be very good.
Thank you. We do have career pathways, and every freshman gets to pick a pathway, and we actually have CP, Career Path Program for IB, so we really are looking at manufacturing and finding space in Sam's garage, but really looking at the space that we have and utilizing it even better. Project Lead the Way is very popular for engineering nurses. Our nursing program is back, we've got a wonderful nurse, and we have an EMT program. I'd love to talk to you more and come back to you to tell you more about the career pathways, but where the, the state always talks about college and career, we really want kids to kind of find their passion and, and wonder what kind of careers are out there, and getting there can happen in all different kinds of ways. It doesn't just have to be a four-year college, it can be in other ways. We have kids who are in a program with EB that will be able to sign on and have a job at EB before they graduate. So those are the kind of opportunities we're really looking for for our kids.
I don't think there's anything wrong with our high school going out into these fields.
No, it's wonderful. And we have so many right here in this beautiful area. So much opportunity for our kids.
Thank you.
Any other town councillors like to speak? Councillor Rusk?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions, starting on this point. I'm sorry. Starting on the twenty-four estimated cost of property unplanned events, Mystic River is a fairly new school, two years old?
Yeah, they opened twenty-twenty-one.
Is any of this under insurance from the people who built it? I mean-
We asked that same question because it was so young. It, there was a bottle filler, and from my understanding, it had to do potentially with water pressure, but I would think that was something that our architects and our design and our team that built the building would have known about prior to putting those water bottle fillers in. But I've talked to John, you know, we've, we've tried to figure this problem out really together, and I think we just missed the deadline, is that what it was, John?
Well, in terms of yes, in terms of them covering it, however, we have a little bit of money left in the bond fund as we keep rolling over the note. Sorry, I have been in discussions with the superintendent. Now, if it was part of the original project, it may, we may be able to cover it. Now, I think we already put fifteen-ish thousand towards your twenty-five thousand on the water thing, but there's a couple others after that we could probably do, not the fence, because that wasn't original to the project. But then there was the middle school, with the middle school, they had something too. So there's a few things we've, and I'm just waiting on a little bit more detail.
Okay, thank you. I'd love an update.
I'd love an update. Sorry, trying to time myself at the same time. I am going to piggyback off Counselor Parker's concern about the employees who were brought in under a grant. I know it was a very large discussion, and I'm concerned about the fact that we still have 23 employees. Was it 23 tutors or 23 employees?
23 tutors.
23 tutors.
So how many employees in total are still?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Those are full-time employees with benefits.
No, not all of those were full-time. There were a couple that were part-time.
There were a couple of security guards, but I think we've even reduced that number. There were many that were brought in, but we've reduced them back in next year's budget for some of those positions, like the security guards.
So what percentage, what number of those are full-time employees with benefits?
I have that. Give me one second, let me see if I have it with me.
While you're looking that up, I won't waste time. I'm going to move on. School-based health clinics, I believe, are very important. But then we also, on top of school-based health clinics, have school social workers and school nurses. At what point does that become one and stop having duplication of services? Because at this point, that's really what it is. When can all students go to one space?
So it is actually a married space in the schools, and it really isn't duplication. The school-based health does other things where the nurse and the social worker are our day-to-day go-to people, where the, in the other cases, parents have to sign on for services. So if there's a bigger mental health problem, then that might be what they're signing on for in school-based health. If there's a physical, you know, giving out shots and, you know, physicals, things that our school nurses don't do, but to help provide the kind of care, preventative care that families, students would need. So I don't see it as a duplication. As a matter of fact, you know, would I love to see more grant money afforded? And I know that we're writing letters to really support our school-based health. They're a wonderful bonus in our, in our school district to have that. But I don't see it as a duplication. I see it as really an alignment of services so that you can really get full services, the day-to-day, you know, illness and sickness and, you know, checking on families with our social workers and our school nurses, and then for more comprehensive care with school-based health.
We can agree to disagree perhaps on that. Were you able to?
Yep, so six are part-time and 37 are full-time, FTs.
Thank you. I'm going to say that I've received a lot of communication from residents who are very concerned about that, because that was not how it was presented, at least to the RTM when I was moderator of the RTM. And I've had a lot of people contact me. I believe those people are very important staff. I understand that. And I don't wish them to not have a job, but that was not how they were brought on. And I think that if you're not finding more grants to pay for those people, then we need to consider what we can do. The page that shows all of the historic revenue to support education, does that include all grants that have been brought in?
Those are the grants that come through the state and the federal government that we actually put in our budget, what the estimated value will be. So those are really the larger grants. Those aren't the additional grants that we've received for specific purposes, like the DODIA that I spoke about, the most recent DODIA, Building Culturally Responsive Community. So that is another page in our budget book. But these are the main drivers that we always indicate in our budget as a real chunk that actually supports our budget, that comes in the name of education.
The page before that, the FY '25 revenue to support education, you have what the federal government gives, what the state government gives, miscellaneous. What percentage is actually from the town? What's the number?
So this is just the revenue section. This isn't the town affordability. This is just what comes in to the town completely. So this is between federal, miscellaneous, and state. And state, of course, at 26.6 million, that's your ECS mostly, and other state funds, miscellaneous state funds. So that's just looking at revenue to support.
Okay, I'm almost done and almost out of time. Your expenditure per pupil, that includes everything, every dollar given from the town, every dollar given from grants, everything.
All of the operating costs. So it's your total operating budget divided by the number of students that we have.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to mention a couple of quick things while we're there. And that the town's portion usually pays about 60% of the Board of Ed budget. And then on top of that, the VNA, the nurses. I also want to mention some of why it's hard to budget for some of this, the ECS, when we receive those dollars, the educational cost sharing, they often are after an audit from the state, and we get some of what you're seeing in one year is actually money coming back from earlier years, so it gets a little confusing.
Okay. That's what we kind of showed it over time, so you could see it.
Thank you.
Counselor Boardman?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you for this presentation, even though I feel these few pages really don't adequately go over what the real budget is. So it's hard to discuss today what I should be thinking or saying, because I don't have a full budget in front of me. With that, it should be fully expanded per the Excel spreadsheet opened up wide. I zoomed in on other towns, and they do this very eloquently. I also feel, and I speak for myself, as an elected official who's asked to ask the Board of Ed about the budget, and I'm told the day of that we only have five minutes, with due respect, I would request that in future that's sent to us so that we can plan for our time accordingly as well. So I'm expected to make this lump-sum five-minute presentation, the only budget hearing we have, and it's almost 60-something percent of the town's budget. What is it, 67, 68? And you're giving me one chance to speak. So with that being said, I'm a firm believer in closing achievement gaps. If we're truly here and our mission is to care about our students, our number-one priority should be making sure that this budget is supporting that initiative. Anything outside of that would be careless. Outside of making sure every student is closing, meeting, or exceeding expectations should be our goal across district-wide. As it is Black History Month, and it was said in the paper that we are trying to close those achievement gaps and making sure minorities, minorities, as a '98 graduate of Fitch, we're still thinking about that, are represented in the upper classes. Yet we're not funding honors-level classes in physics and in English. So you can have a student that comes in freshman year in what you call your new generalist college prep, and they stay their freshman, sophomore year, and then come junior year, they have nowhere to go. That's why you're not able to close the achievement gaps. That's why kids do not have a normal delineation and movement within the curriculum. I encourage this board to really look at your curriculum development, because there's major gaps. Every year since I've been elected for the last seven, eight years, it's always been, "Well, if we don't get this, we might have to cut teachers or direct staff." That's always been the threat coming from the Board of Ed. No disrespect to the new people that are on there. That needs to stop. That shouldn't be the plan. I encourage you to look up at the central office. Never once has this Board of Ed come before us and said, "Where can we make cuts where the students don't see those staff in central office?" I'm not saying I want to cut anybody, but it should not be on the backs of the students or the taxpayers. It should be, "Where are we heavy? We've hired a communication director." I'm not saying she should be cut, but honestly, if you're looking at a budget before cutting a teacher, that position should go, because that is not affecting the students directly. We have major achievement gaps that were not being closed prior to COVID, as I stood on the Education Committee with Mr. Whitney many years ago, and I've stood before here and said the same things over and over. Honors, English 11, physics honors should be available. Honors-level Spanish and French classes should be available. What they're doing is, it's making everyone funnel into IB and AP unethically, not traditionally, not comfortably, and we were told that the supports would be there, and they're not. Under special ed, PARAs, constant calls about PARAs not being available to students, PARAs contacted me, telling me that they're told to be with one student where they're assigned to, but they're having to work with other students. That's a concern. I heard tonight about cutting, you know, possibly tutors. I understand that, but I have trouble cutting something if it's directly impacting the students. We need to look for other ways to find cost savings up at the top. You know, when you do it in your own home, you don't take away your food budget. You don't take away your car. You start cutting trips and leisure things and things that are not needed at the top. And I encourage this Board of Ed to work as hard as they can, because this is the superintendent's budget, and I commend this Board of Ed for asking the most questions I've ever seen in any other budget transparency openness in the past. Sports, athletics, not being funded properly. Our buildings, not being cared for properly. Our teachers, not being supported properly. But yet we keep hiring more and more positions up at central office. So I ask, and I will FOI this, I'd like a request of all the people hired, from top to bottom, the dates they were hired, because we knew the funding was ended, but we're still hiring people. DODIA funding. I'm, I was, my children were military dependents. My husband retired, so we fell off that system. My son, for the last three years, has not been a DOD in the school, because his father's retired and doesn't work at a facility that requires. We cannot depend on DODIA funds as an adequate way to move forward in any fiscally responsible budget. We don't know what the numbers are going to look like year to year. We shouldn't be scrounging, waiting, and hoping more applications come in. We need to act now and make sure that money actually is going directly to help those students, which I feel it does not directly. And that whole mission that it would go to technology, that needs to be revised and revisited. Maybe that's not the mission of this current council or this current Board of Education. So I think it's very important that we look at that. I also think that students shouldn't have to have as much parent involvement to be in marching band and fencing. I mean, we are not funding it as equally as our counterparts and our neighbors around us. We should be working to close achievement gaps. Special ed, the supports lacking, the behavior problems. I came before you guys asking for AED machines, still not mounted, still not posted. That's a health concern. That's a safety concern. Fund it. It's a few thousand dollars. Get them up. Get them up in the new section of the building where they were not. I asked that almost a year ago, and I was kind of brushed off by some folks. We have to find ways where safety and truly education is our plan. Dr. Ackerman, I commend her at the, I've been following on the budget meetings. You stated when you were at the Fitch Middle School, you took a freeze on your salary. That's the type of things that I saw in the past before I got involved as an elected official. People were willing to freeze their large three, six-figure salaries to make sure the supports were there for our students. That should be our teaching. If our goal is teaching and learning, well, let's get to it. We don't need all these other, you know, nice wants and haves at the central office that we don't need, that the students aren't seeing. Vaping, major concern for high school. My son was actually going to come speak tonight, and he gave me permission to say that, but he had some other things come up. It's unsafe. The bathrooms are all being locked. We have females who have health and safety issues that have to walk around the whole entire building to find an open bathroom. That's unhealthy, unjust, and unright. Their rights are being violated, in my opinion, personally. My son says you have to make a decision about using the bathroom or getting into class on time. Install vape detectors. I'm sorry? Thank you. Install vape detectors. Open those bathrooms back up and let those kids have free access to the bathrooms. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take my turn. I think this budget is sort of shocking. I don't know how else to say it. I think 11 million increase over 13% is literally shocking, and I think our community's going to be absolutely, like, in shock over this. I don't know how else to say it. I will go through some of the notes that I have here. The first thing I do have to ask, though, I watched your meeting, and I would like to know why the tutors' hours were cut. If you have enough in the grant to last till, like, in September?
Well, we had to go back to the drawing board on that. We were just getting them to their contractual time, and we did not want to have to cut them in the middle of the year, but we were able to go back and readjust and make some adjustments on the ARPESR. But we had to go back to the drawing board with that. So that was just one of several other different avenues to finish up and close out this ARPESR grant.
So you had $1.8 million for that grant for this, this school year? And I mean, you can forecast everybody's salaries and everything, so what was the issue? I don't understand.
Well, there were other mitigating circumstances, even from last year, that carried over to this year, that were, you know, compromised. So we, we did the best we could, and that was just one of the, the areas that we thought we could reduce without losing the positions.
All right, I'm going to move on, because I have a lot of other things with that one. I do have some issues that I take with that. On the transportation, have, has the Board of Ed considered possibly taking up a study to see about bringing buses back to, within the community instead of outsourcing?
To purchase our own buses, you mean, and run a bus company?
Run the bus company, run the buses like they used to in the past.
Oh, I didn't know that they ever had, did their own buses.
Right, and there's plenty of grants right now for electric buses from the state that would actually fund a lot of buses for you.
Well, Gristwald is still waiting for theirs from over two years, so they're trying it out, but they haven't gotten them yet.
What is the total PARA, because you wrote down that the PARA-union contractual agreement is also an issue that has touched on your budget this year. What is the total increase for this year?
It was a 6% increase.
Because you had budgeted, you had budgeted, I think on average, it was 5% increase, so...
No, it was 6%.
You had, in your last year's budget, you had 5% budgeted already? So you're saying six on top of the five?
No, no, no.
Six. So it's a 1% increase from what we passed last year's budget?
Yeah, 1%, and then it was a little retro going back to the beginning of the school year.
Okay, so 1% isn't really...
Yeah, that, that started because that list started before the negotiations had completed, so we just didn't know where that was going to land.
Right. But you probably paid a lot more in legal fees than you probably, is that correct?
Well, we did have, you have legal fees, because you have a lawyer on both sides.
Yeah, and it lasted quite some time.
It did last. We were in mediation, but we didn't go to arbitration.
I think issues with invoices coming in from past years, that is an accounting issue. That is absolutely an accounting issue. When it comes to a lot of these items that I'm seeing in the school, the HVAC, and I'm just going to say it, I've heard from other people, there is much disappointment that you did not apply for the HVAC grants for the 2023 year. There is a lot of people speaking about this and very upset about it.
So you had to have, you had to have matching funds with the town, and we didn't have that, so we weren't able to do that.
Right, and you could have. You could have came to the council and asked for them. So I think that was a missed opportunity, and there are many people that are very upset about that.
I think we've been bringing CIPs related to HVAC to the town every year.
Right, but that grant would, I mean, they have over $200 million in HVAC grants.
We'll be back, because we are going to apply for the December.
It will be the last year, though, but I'm just saying it was a possibility to get it for, you know...
And we did it the year before, and we did not get it.
Right, and I believe there was a video sent out stating how to do it, so that you were not cut off the list.
We do have a grant writer who's very industrious, and she does monitor and look at all of that, along with the facilities director. So they were, they were abreast of what needed to happen when they applied the first time.
By you saying that you have a grant writer and you didn't apply for the grant, sort of, will probably make people even more upset to know that. I'm just, I'm just stating something that, things that I've heard. Also, the ARPA, it was $1.8 million in ARPA funding that you had, that you're carrying on to the next year, is that correct? The whole 1.8 million?
No, the ARPESR closes out, if you're talking about ARPESR.
Yes.
It closes out. It has to be closed.
But all the positions that were in there for this year, you're carrying over to the next year's budget, is that correct?
No, we are not carrying all of the positions over. We are not.
How many were in the ARPESR then for this year?
I'll have to check.
We can get that.
I don't know the exact number.
Because if you're, if you're talking about 43 employees, I'd like to know how many you're carrying over into next year, because that was an issue. And did you negotiate on the insurance increases? And did you check any other companies?
We actually partner with the town with the insurance.
Yes, I'm sure there's a negotiation. I know Laura's here too, so she can help a little bit, but I think we've been evaluating not only the current plan that we're on, fully insured plans, the state partnership plan, just to see what those look like, you know, just given our, our population.
Okay. I think Counselor Jones made a very valid point about the increase that the taxpayers would have if this stays where it's at. I think there's issues there. I've also heard about the social media communications person as well, that gets paid $85,000 a year. That's what I'm being told. And that is one of those kind of positions. Do we really need something in that, or can it be absorbed somewhere else? I want to know why on the page here, that's proposed budget with healthcare... I want to know why on the page here, that's proposed budget with healthcare, on why the salary increases are at 7.92%.
Well, those are all done by contract. So they're all contractual. The Board of Ed works with each of our unions, from the teachers' union to the administrator's union. We have the custodial technology and secretary union, the paraprofessional tutor union, and those are all negotiated. And they've been four-year contracts.
So you're saying on average, they're going to get a 7.92% increase? Or are you, do you have additional employment in there that's bringing up that number?
No, it's about, it's about half for the contractual increases, but that's where the ARPESR FTEs go as well. So those weren't, if you look at the fiscal year '24 budget, those, those people were not in that $52 million number.
I'm sorry, what page you?
I'm just on the same, I was just referencing the same document that you're on. So if you look at '24, the folks that are in ARPESR were not included in that number. So now that ARPESR is going away, those roll over into the board, into the $56 million number. So when you look at that 4.2, it's about half contractual, half ARPESR.
So like I just said, the people from the ARPESR funding are being rolled into this budget?
Not all of them.
Not all of them. But your increase is basically $4 million, and that's 7.92%. And that's what I'm asking you. Are there additional staffing that you're putting in here? Because there's no way you're giving it almost an 8% increase to everybody. And that's an average. That means that there are people above and below that number.
So we are doing a scheduling project right now at the middle school and high school. And so we are going to be looking at more FTEs. So know that we're not done yet. This is just the first rollout of this budget for level services.
Okay.
Mayor, I just have a question. It's also important to remember that when you have non-unions, of course, the percent you give, you know, is directly tied in with collective bargaining. You have the steps also. So you're going to have the step plus the, you know, if you don't have them all at the top end, so that accounts for some of that, just the natural step increases.
So you're saying people are getting 8% or more?
Well, let's say we gave a union 2.75%, well, they might already be getting a 3% natural step if they're not at the end. So, you know, it could be closing in on that, so.
Well, I think that if you talk to the teachers and people in the education departments, and they don't get an 8%, they're going to wonder why that number's so high. And also, how many students do we have in our, how many students do we have? Because I had done the number based on these old, rough estimates. I had 4,409.
I was going to say 4,400.
4,400. And then you've lost some students because of sub left, is that correct? About 200 and some?
Well, they're come and go all the time.
I know they come. They come and go. But currently, we have lost over 200, is that correct?
Well, no, because the, the net change was actually a positive for us. We, I know that we had 750 that joined us last year and about 625 that left. So there was a net difference of more our good.
Okay, so I used a calculation of 4,409 that I got from the historical numbers here you put. That would put us at 20,974, pretty close to $21,000 per student. And that would definitely jump us up way up the chart here. And I'm always, always been a huge advocate for education for our students, truly am. And I understand it needs to be increased, but this is like extremely quick and a lot all at once. So to go from 79 up to 21,000 is a lot. It's, it's an extreme lot. So my time is basically has expired. But now I'd like to speak as the mayor. I would like to thank you for this meeting. And just to note that next month, there will be a public hearing on the town and the Board of Ed budget hearing before the, the Board of Ed signs off on their budget, well, after they sign off on their budget. There will be a community-wide, where the whole community can speak on this budget as well. And this is typically a meeting where we get to tell you sort of our feelings on how we feel about your initial budget before the town Board of Ed does more of their work. And the community will have their input next month. And also, it comes to the town council, and we do a deep dive when it comes to us, so.
Well, the Board of Ed needs to give you their budget by the end of this month.
Right.
So that will be, that will be complete, you know? So that work is going to be happening in the next three weeks.
Right, and then we will take a deep dive when it comes to us and our budget.
Right.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have a quick clarifying question.
Your clarifying question?
Sure. When you asked regarding the paras and the superintendent said, you know, we decided, was that the whole Board of Ed? Was that you and finance, or where did that decision? I just wanted to understand who, who made that decision.
Who negotiates a contract?
When you, when you were deciding, the tutors, when you're thinking of cutting it.
The tutor hours.
Yeah, and you said we decided, like, who's in that decision?
So really, we, I had been letting the board know some of the things we were dealing with and where we could make some changes. But that was really a decision that we looked at through HR department and through trying to figure out how we could, without losing staff, make some adjustments. So that was really done at the staff level. Paraprofessionals are, paraprofessionals are hired based on a student's IEP. So through a meeting process with parents and with staff, we know if, if a student may need a one-to-one para, which would be really needing a lot of assistance, and we do have students who need that kind of level of support, or, or are they a shared para, where they're able to work with more than one child? And that happens through kind of a legal process called the PPT, Planning and Placement Team. So oftentimes, that and outplacements in special ed, students moving in with certain IEPs, those are all things that are kind of beyond our control, but we have to plan for anyway. So know that, you know, we have to follow these legal binding documents with students and provide the surfaces that are needed. So just know that, you know, sometimes we get surprises. You might have a child who was outplaced in another community, and you go to PPT, and they still need that kind of level of support. We have done a really good job bringing back a lot of kids because of the programming that we do have in our district. So I feel good about that. That was always an expense that really was a driver in the budget. And not that it can't happen, you know, you just never know who's going to move into town and what kind of level of support that child is going to need. But know that that isn't something the board decides, that I decide. That's really based on a committee of parents and teachers who are working with the child, who decide what the child needs.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to recognize any board members who would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first and foremost, I also share the surprise and shock at the large percentage of increase that's been presented to us. Now, when we move forward, I'm glad for the delineation that's been established that this is the superintendent's proposed budget, and this is not the board's budget. So we will be working on this over the next many weeks. And I'll let you all know that one of my guiding principles that I'll be bringing to my part of deliberations will be referring back to our mission of teaching and learning. While that may seem like an oversimplified mission statement at this point, I think it actually works fairly well for our guiding principle in this time. For my guiding philosophy, when it comes to looking at this budget, I'm going to be looking at ways we can make adjustments, reductions, that will least impact the students, yet most impact the budget. So in order to do that, we need more detail. I've asked a number of times in a number of different ways for an expanded budget, where I could see beyond just the object codes and the general broad line items. And that's been not forthcoming in the detail that I would like to see, nor without, nor with the additional context that I'd like to see. We had a frequently asked question spreadsheet that we compiled as a board over this process over the past month. And a number of my questions came back with a label saying "not a budget question." I was asking for accreditation surveys and reports. I was asking for staff and students' surveys. I was asking for neck expenditure charts, similar to what we see in this package. But I wanted a different context. I wanted to see administrative costs. I wanted to see travel costs, workshop costs, convention costs, tuition reimbursement. Look, I'm all for professional development when we can afford it. But at this point, if we're having to decide between, you know, tutors on a ground level that have direct contact with students, provide direct support for students, or, you know, other positions that are not immediately impactful, then obviously we have to arrange our priorities in reaction to that. And again, our mission is teaching and learning. So if you're not teaching and you're not learning, then we have to look at that position or that expenditure, if it's not directly involved with teaching and learning. There's a number of other items on this. I'm not going to chew up my limited time going down the list. But having a comparative cost chart like this, but for other aspects of the budget, would be exceedingly helpful. You know, for administrative costs and all the other things I just mentioned. The CIPs, as the superintendent mentioned, I guess one of the challenges in getting that grant was that the town had not previously committed to it. It seems like there's a bit of a breakdown between the superintendent making it known or asked, or, and then the town being willing to make earlier commitments. I know I've sat on the RTM for a number of terms, and usually the first thing that gets cut when it comes to the budget, the big budget, is CIPs. Now, we looked at excess revenues coming back to the town over the past, there was one of these charts in one of these pages, looking back from 2018 to 2023, close to about $10 million in various Impact Aid refunds and special ed refunds have come back through the town, yet were not reserved for Board of Ed use. Now, not only is that an argument for a non-lapsing fund, which I would encourage the council to consider, and that we are working on on the Board of Ed side to bring an idea forward to you, oh, you should think about it. So that would be a way to put, to put that money into a reserved account that can be specific for CIPs such as this. So it takes the sting off the town, the immediate impacts, year to year. Second, the point I wanted to make is if you add all these CIPs up, it comes out to be just about $10 million. Ain't that funny? So we should think about that. We're looking at HVAC upgrades on Northeast Academy, HVAC upgrades at Fitch High School, HVAC upgrades at Charles Barnum. Charles Barnum, you're looking at $2.3 million CIP to get that school sorted out the way it needs to be. And that's the school that's overwhelmingly serving our military community. So if we value our military community, we need to make, you know, like the old saying goes, you want to show me your priorities, show me your budget.
My apologies. That's the timekeeper, you're at 5:34.
Thank you. And then Fitch High School Athletic Facility is not ADA compliant in the current state. And the auditorium project, right now we have the marching band, portable speakers providing the sound in the auditorium, just so you know.
Tim Manager Burt, did you have something to say?
Just a, yeah, a couple of things. One, in terms of the CIPs, the town spends 3.5 to 4 million a year out of general fund for CIPs. About a million and a half are off the bat, off the top for roads and sidewalks. So for, in terms of HVAC, it's going to be a, it's going to have to be a bonding issue. So we need lots of lead time for that. It's not going to be a CIP, per se. It'll be a CIP, but not funded via the general fund. In terms of the 10 million, I passed out something this weekend that shows those have been used to keep down taxpayer dollars. Those monies have been spent to keep the mill rate down. And the town as it is, is spending 60, is funding 60% of the budget, not counting the V and A. So just something to keep in mind for that. And non-lapsing is for unexpend, unexpendanted expenditures, not for extra revenues.
Any other board members that wanted to make a comment?
I just wanted to say thank you all for coming out tonight. I know this is not a required meeting, and I appreciate that everyone took time to come out. We didn't want to, again, the board hasn't voted, but we wanted to sort of summarize some of the challenges that we are facing and have it not be a shock to you, or have you not read about it in the newspaper without knowing some of the background. However, this is not the budget. It's not done. We will be meeting, we have added another special meeting this Thursday. We have been meeting once or twice a week to try to get a handle on all the operations in the Board of Ed. I share Mr. Thomas's concern that we should be spending money on what directly affects the children because as Board of Ed members, that's our top priority. However, we also have to understand that the taxpayers are underwriting everything that the state and federal government is not, and we need to be cognizant. This town has been very generous in providing bonding for new schools. And they've always been very generous in, in funding the schools. Obviously, we're very appreciative for that. We're going to look at this very carefully in terms of what we are going to bring to you in, in the final budget. I will just mention that I spoke to Representative Conley this afternoon. One of the assumptions in our budget is that the state told us last year that they were going to pick up 100% of the out-of-district magnet tuition. However, the governor has now proposed that they might only pick up half. Now, we don't really know what that will be until the legislature is done, probably in May. So that's just one more challenge that we just need to be aware of, is that we are building a budget on shifting sands. We're told one thing, and it's changing, you know, midstream. And, but, but again, thank you all for taking the time.
When I heard the figure of $4 million increase to transfer some of our tutors and a few other people to, from the ARPESR to ours, I don't think I stepped back and fell down, but it was a shock. And yet, speaking as a volunteer who is not a finance person, who is not a trained administrator in education, I'm struggling very hard because, to use Ian's comment, it's teaching and learning. To use Representative Bordland's comment, excuse me, I'm sorry. Counselor Bordler's comment that we have to focus on academic achievement. And so I'm, I'm struggling because these tutors are the frontline people of providing academic achievement. At the same time, the amount of money is very high. How we find, how I find as an individual, how we find as a board, what is a quote acceptable level to protect the kids at the basic level of learning while not putting an onerous burden on the taxpayers, is really the dilemma that I see myself facing. And honestly, I don't know how I'm going to come down on it.
Motion? We will do an adjournment first. Any motion to adjourn?
Representative Farrelly, you have a question or a comment?
I'm anxious, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to say I had to work late, and then I had to quickly tune into your meeting. I think you're, this is a little bit, I'm still at work right now. I appreciate all of you trying to keep a balance of the budgets and what's best for the children. And I know it is going to be difficult from the news we just heard about the state funding. But that's why we're here, to try to analyze this with the council, the RTM, and the Board of Education. I just wanted to say hello to everyone. Sorry I couldn't come earlier, but if you have any... Sorry I couldn't come earlier, but if you have any concerns or questions, you know, I'm, I'm always available. You know, my days off are usually Thursday, Friday, but if you need anything, just, I've been on the committee before years ago, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the town council have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Parker, seconded by Rusk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes one. I guess six.
Do you have a motion to adjourn the RTM Education Committee?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There aren't any. We're good, we're adjourned.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Ed.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We're adjourned. Thank you.
All right. 7:28.